Well then I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. The record show that a form of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and we noticed this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings at Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Loomer, will you please lead us into the invocation?
Absolutely. We're gonna pause for a brief prayer and if you don't desire to pray with this, if you'll just observe a moment of silence. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for allowing us to just see another day. And so, we ask now that you will guide us as we enter into this meeting. We ask that you will grant us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. And as we address the business of the Prosper Independent School District, we ask that you will just guide us through it. We pray for this community in which we live. We pray for all the parents and students and pray for the faculty and staff. We ask these things in your name. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Bernadette Gereis to make her way to the front. We have, this will actually come out this week in the few minutes with Dr. Ferguson, but last week was a very exciting moment for Prosper ISD specifically for our Human Resources Department. Ms. Gereis, actually, I would wonder what the same level been at the national level? For the whole entire nation and inside the point of right here.
Wow, okay, so, um, thank you so much. This really was an exciting surprise for us. Christine Byes is our Director of HR. She and I have been working together since 2012 when Dr. Wilkins and the school board really gambled on a teacher, you know? And that's what I love about our school district and Dr. Ferguson and our school board, they continue that practice and just taking a chance on innovative ideas and looking at who people are, not necessarily what it says on their resume or what it says on, you know, whatever's out there. But they take a chance on the people, the character, and that's what I love about our school district and I'm so proud to be able to represent our school district at a national level, so.
Well, they can just take the better course. Mrs. Gereis is truly, truly passionate about our students, our staff, our parents, our community and we're so. Very, very fortunate, that passion, it plays out definitely in all of her work in Prosper ISD, so thank you very much and congratulations, National Award winner. It's amazing. We have some other national award winners with us tonight, so I'd like all of our national merit semifinalists first to come up. Okay, Dr. Ferguson's standing right here and I'd like Mr. Toad and Dr. Ferguson to come up. Mr. Rutledge, if you will come up as well. Okay, so we have some pretty new technology in the boardroom today. So this is a microphone right here and so I'm going to have each one of you, this was part of the test, right? So you get to introduce yourself to the crowd and then you're going to say what campus you're from.
Hi, my name is Emily Warren, I'm from Rockville High School.
Okay, and Emily? Mr. Toad will come and he will. Come on up. Okay, we probably need to do a vocal off, Emily. This was a really big deal, huge. One point five percent. Paparazzi wait. Paparazzi, come, you wait, Emily. Oh, you're next, okay, okay. Don't take that. Okay. All right.
Hi, I'm Reed Smith, I'm from Prosper High School.
Excellent, so Dr. Ferguson, will you come on the screen?
I'm Deppi Cyber, I'm from Prosper High School, PHS.
Excellent.
My name is Gotham Janavla and I'm from Rockville High School.
Excellent.
My name is Sayed Hoda, I'm from Rockville High School.
Excellent.
How do you do, Gideon, I'm from Rockville High School.
So these are our semifinalist award winners. Actually, if you'll all come back up together because I think this thing is gonna want a group picture of you together. This is top 1.5% in the nation. Sorry, the podium gets in the way. Are you ready? Smile. And I'll get out of the way so everybody behind me can get a picture. So if you'll come up? Okay, so introduce yourself and then what campus you're from.
Hi, I'm Sneha, I'm from Prosper High School.
I'm McKenna Bramble, I'm from Prosper High School.
I'm Kirsten Schrader, I'm from Prosper High School.
Hi, I'm Steven Phillips, I'm from Prosper High School.
Uh, hey y'all, I'm Jonathan CEO and I'm from Prosper High School.
Jonathan, are you going to A&amp;M? There's some supporters in the room and you are, just saying.
I'm Erica and I'm from Prosper High School.
Hi, I'm Grant Wallace and I'm from Rockville High School.
Good job, man.
Hi, I'm Aria Taver and I'm from Rockville High School.
I'm Charlotte Williams, I'm from Rockville High School.
I'm Charlie Costa, I'm from Prosper High School.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Grant McNabb and I'm from Rockville High School.
I'm Tyler Cummings, I'm from Prosper High School.
I'm Tapasuni Padavantam from Rockville High School.
I'm Sarah Compton, I'm from Rockville High School.
I'm Raquel Smith, I'm from Prosper High School.
Hi, I'm Kate Carline and I'm from Rockville High School.
My A&amp;M moms, don't go. We had a few students that were unable to attend tonight, but certainly a few minutes with Dr. Ferguson, we had their names announced and they were on the screen. I am so, so very proud because, you know, so many times we get football games and volleyball games and all of the different events, but this is really the Super Bowl of academics for our students and I am so beyond proud. The number of hours that you all have spent, the students studying, preparing, being able to be academically where you need to be. I want to thank all of the educators in the room because at some level they have helped you, but I also want to thank your parents because it takes a huge amount of dedication on a parent's part to really support these students to get to this high level, so thank you, parents, for that. There have been times in Prosper ISD where we only had zero names. I am proud to say that we have 107 National Merit Scholars in Prosper ISD. Absolutely outstanding. I know that you all probably want to stay for the rest of the meeting and you're more than welcome to do that, but if you don't want to, please feel free to go ahead and make your exit with your parents. They might want to take you like for ice cream or maybe dinner or. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you all. That was fun. That was fun. Oh my goodness, absolutely. Absolutely. That was really good.
It is, it's so outstanding. When you finally see kind of the fruits of your life.
Yes, no, it's amazing.
Gosh, we have been in waiting, it feels like forever.
Oh, it's fabulous.
And it's hard because they move the target every year or two, so it doesn't stay as.
I agree.
It's for, depends on the kids.
I think that's what happened to me, I did, they moved the target on me.
That's what.
Yeah, was right there. They moved the dang target.
Well played, well played.
Yeah.
They moved the target on him.
He was on the cusp. Okay. Well, we do a lot of fun things in board meetings like approved tax rates and class size waivers and budget amendments, but that's pretty fun, so that's exciting.
Outstanding.
Surprised they didn't want to stay for all that fun stuff though that we have coming up. Uh, but we do have, coming up, we do have our, as you remember, we've, we have our open forum. Time which we've split into two pieces, which we have a agenda-related items and a non-agenda-related items and the signups tonight are all for non-agenda-related items, so we will get to those items and give them the proper time and attention they need, but we'll do that as before we go into executive session. So at this point in time, we'll run into the consent agenda.
Okay, very good. So we have the meetings from the September meeting for you all to review. I know you all have had those, but certainly any questions that you want to bring up or clarification, but just a recap of last month's meeting. And we have an enrollment update, so 21,585 students and counting. Then construction update, Mr. Dave Velasco is actually going to show a video so we can actually go onsite to Star Trail Elementary School, number. Walnut Grove. Very good. And just for the audience and those watching at home too, there's, um, inside of the agenda packet, you'll have actual screenshots, so I just have the updates here and then the video, but the people at home should have been able to see that video with our new technology now in place.
Very good.
Any questions? About any of the construction, it's actually quite unbelievable.
It is.
Right, that one day that will be a school, sitting there in both sites, so. All right, we have one budget amendment. Any questions about that? Or any questions for Ms. Fulmer that you might have?
Any questions on that one?
No.
Okay, then let's, uh, we'll include that as part of the consent agenda, which I will take a motion for approval of.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Deborah, all in, uh, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Drew, all in favor?
Great.
We'll go ahead and get into the education portion. The only thing we have on the agenda tonight for education is the K through four classroom waivers. Um, what we're looking for too is kind of this one-time approval. We'll continue to bring those back to you, but you can see from last time, there hasn't been any movement. We're still at a total of 36 waivers, just like we were last month. This just helps us with our process as far as being able to submit those to TEA with a little more ease versus having to wait each and every month. Um, but we'll continue to bring this information to you and then post that in the packet for our public to be able to see too, where we are on numbers. But, like I said, it's staying the exact same as what it was last month.
Okay. Questions or comments on that? If not, I'll take a motion for item number eight on the agenda, eight A.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jana.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly, all in favor? Here we go.
We'll jump into business and I'll ask Ms. Fulmer to come up to give us an update on our financial investment tax report for September.
Thank you. We have the financials, I'm gonna have to orient myself, I'm used to looking at the screen right here. The financials for, through September 30th is the first month of our fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from September to August. We're gonna jump right into the investment portfolio. Uh, total investments for all funds, 370 million this year compared to 203 million prior year, 82% increase, that's due to the bond proceeds we received on September 1st. The general operating fund is 33% of the overall portfolio, uh, with 122 million in market value. If we look at our benchmark performance through September 30th, we're at .04% weighted average yield for the portfolio. The 30-day and the one-year are trending upwards slightly, that always gets me very excited even though it's only .1 of basis point. Um, and this, um, pie chart shows our, all of our financial institutions where we have our investments and our days to maturity, our weighted average maturity for the overall portfolio is four days. Investment comparison by fund, this is the general fund only, 125 million at this time last year compared to 122 million this year. So we're gonna leave investments and move on to revenues and expenditures. Total revenue for the general fund is 20 million, uh, year-to-date, slightly less than this time prior year. Revenue by source, if we look at our budgeted revenue for the total fiscal year, 211 million, collected year-to-date, uh, 20.8 million, uh, 9.8% of budget completed year-to-date, slightly behind prior year, but still well within what we're expecting for the year. Tax collections, um, this time of year, the levy really doesn't roll out until October with the tax office, so September, we have some chargebacks annually. So this year, we have, um, 0% so far on the levy. We'll see a little bit more of that starting in October. And ag rollback back collections, um, really haven't started much this year either, $956 since September. Expenditures for the general operating fund, general fund only, $22 million, uh, through this month, 15.4% increase from prior year, this time last year. And expenditures by major object, we have overall budgeted 220 million, year-to-date, 22% complete for the year, 10.4, right there where we were on expenditures this time last year. If we move on to the athletics fund, we see a very different cash flow, um, perspective than we did last year. $176,000 positive, uh, for the first month only of the fiscal year. We look at child nutrition, um, slight, um, cash flow deficit through September, but it was less than prior year. Starting the year, there's just, um, some of those things that it will change as we go forward. We do have a different contract this year with the Department of Agriculture. They changed the way that the, um, food service management company bills us, so it should be more straightforward, especially when we get towards the end of the, um, school year.
Ms. Fulmer, the differences we're seeing too are a COVID year versus what is a little more of a normal year, because we did see a decline in kids eating in the cafeteria because of COVID concerns last year, correct?
Thank you very much. So last year, uh, in September, we, everything was uncertain, but especially child nutrition operations. And if we look at the debt service fund, uh, net cash flow for the year, $242,000 and those won't really change until we see tax collections come in, um, starting really around December, January. And everything builds to our two debt payments a year, which is in February and August. Elementary school, um, 15, we saw the video on that a moment ago. The Pogue contract, uh, 23 million remaining on that, uh, cumulative 1.2 million, 5% total spent on that project. And Walnut Grove High School expended so far on the contract, 6.2% and 12.4 million expended cumulative on that so far. And that concludes our September financial report.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Ms. Fulmer. Motion for nine A.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Bill, make a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dina, all in favor?
Great.
Thank you.
We have consideration and possible action on approval of the annual renewal of the district's investment policy.
Thank you. This is a routine annual item that we're required to adopt. There are no changes recommended to the investment policy for Prosper ISD.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for nine B, please.
I'll make a motion for nine B.
Thank you, Deb, second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Drew, all in favor? Okay.
Okay, consideration and possible approval of purchasing new units to replace the old equipment that is becoming end-of-life. So this is where we start kind of going down that cliff or kind of coming off the side of it, because now our equipment is starting to age and so it's time to start doing replacement. So you can see, we've got 4,500 Chromebooks with end-of-life coming to summer 2022 that Mr. Dave Velasco and his team will have to be going out to get all of that replaced. Just for clarification on the Chromebooks as well as the laptops, those things, um, it, it has to do with the unit and then when that unit was brought into the system, it doesn't have to be necessarily tagged to a specific school. So if you were thinking, okay, are they gonna go to Prosper High School or are they gonna go to Rushing Middle School, um, it's actually based on the actual unit and then the ones that need to be pulled and replaced. Now, more than likely, it's going to be sitting on one campus, but not always, because we've had staff members that move around and they take a laptop and they go with that laptop when they're going to a new location, so there'll be that. But Mr. Dave Velasco and his team do an excellent job of tagging each device so we know and can account for everything. Any questions?
Any questions on that?
I'm assuming they're on some type of, not a rolling schedule, but I guess to your point, these, these are expiring, I guess if that's where we're using, they're at their end-of-life now and then I'm assuming next year there'll be others.
Yes, we're probably in a cycle of where we're going to see this, because what happens as technology ages is then it becomes somewhat, could be detrimental to the system, right? Because we can't do updates and things that we should be able to because it's aged out to the point. And so, yes, we're gonna probably see this as kind of an annual coming forward to replace those aging devices.
Okay.
Okay, good question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on? Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion for nine C.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Jana. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Wonderful.
Good. Next up is actually Apple equipment that we have. And one of the things that we made a decision of several years ago is that our younger students would have like iPads. We have some MacBooks that are also for different programs like career and technical education. But we have predominantly Chromebooks is really the device. And the price point obviously is a lot more conducive than an Apple device. And so you can see, these are the Apple equipment pieces that are actually aging out. So we've got eighty-seven iMacs, a hundred and fifty-eight MacBook Pros. And then we have four hundred and seventy-nine iPads. And you can see the date on those are twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. The good thing is, is that we can get money back for those. And so we're looking at a range of a hundred and four thousand and some change up to a hundred and forty-nine thousand and some change that we can get that, some of the money back when we actually sell these items. And then that'll just go back into the technology fund to replenish.
Thank you. I had that question of where does that, what do we do with that? So.
Good.
We'll make a line item for it, actually within the budget.
Okay.
That's your question.
No, see, exactly. That's what I said.
That's usually my question. I'm gonna pass it to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments on nine D? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion for nine D.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Second?
Second.
Bill, all in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, now we need to jump to elementary fifteen that we just saw a video on. And we're trying to get out there to get the equipment for it. As you know, with COVID, there's many delays on many things. And so we wanna make sure that we're ensuring the arrival of equipment as we start the school and open this school in August of twenty-two. So we, we're coming a little bit early with this request. So you can see that the Chromebooks not to exceed the one thousand forty-four units. Windows equipment that we'll need mainly for the staff there, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand iPads for students. Those are again for the younger students, but also for special education students who may not have the dexterity to be able to actually type on a keyboard that may need those at forty-four thousand. And then for the phone system, forty-five thousand and some change.
And just for clarity, the Chromebooks that are on this proposal, this is totally different from the Chromebooks that we just approved, right?
Yes, sir. So these will be new devices that will come specifically for elementary fifteen. Cause that's gonna come through a new facility purchase.
How does this listing compare to the last opening of the most recent elementary?
Actually, some of the items have gone up. The Chromebooks have a stay on the cost. And the iPads roughly there is the other miscellaneous equipment. It has changed slightly, but not drastically. It's about the same price, the same cost.
Like the number of units being purchased, is that in line pretty much with?
Yes, the only worry of all is the Chromebooks because that's a moving target depending on enrollment. So we decided to sit at that number and go from there. If we need less, it will be less. Yes.
I hope we don't have a thousand kids showing up.
I hope we don't have a thousand kids showing up at elementary fifteen.
That would be a problem.
We're gonna need some portable.
The Chromebooks would be the least of our problems.
I do wanna note though, just because we are going to end up coming back to you, see a note there on the document cameras, cafeteria, point-of-sales, visitor system. So when we do the, the badges for our visitors and printers, those things will actually come at a later request. So this is only really the, the phone system and then the student and teacher equipment for the building.
Great.
Technology-wise.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion for nine E. Elementary fifteen.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jana. Second?
I'll second.
Dina, oop, I think Dina won. All in favor? Great, very good.
And Dr. Bradley's making his way, so school sites, infrastructure.
Yeah, the first thing we have for you tonight is recommending Huckabee be awarded the design of our site at the West, Westridge School Site. And so I just wanted to remind the board, when we passed the bond in two thousand and nineteen, we knew that we're gonna need a lot of new schools and, and so we listed out a lot of things that we were going to anticipate that money would be spent on. After we passed the bond in two thousand and nineteen, the legislature adopted a new series of laws that required us to move to full-day pre-K. And so that came right on the heels actually of, of us passing the bond. And we are to the point now where we believe that an early childhood center is in the interest of the district. And the reason is, Ms. Moss and her team are doing a great job at Reeves, but they're basically running a school within a school over there with a number of pre-K kids that we have, well over three hundred. And then across the district, we have a couple of other early childhood programs at Windsong and Rucker. And so we are, if we do not build an early childhood center, we're essentially going to take over a ton of classrooms in our elementaries with early childhood classrooms. And they weren't designed for that. And so we, we feel that now is the time to move on that. We have a site, the Westridge Site that's on the south side of the district. It's where a lot of our, currently a lot of our early childhood kids reside. And so we think the location's good. It will also keep us from impacting the fur, Hughes, and spread the attendance zones. And so I'm asking tonight that, that Huckabee be assigned the contract to design that building. We have used Huckabee routinely. You know that when they do a prototype building, their fee is at four-point-five percent. When they do a new building, it's at six percent. This is a new building. So to be clear, this, while this site is big enough for an elementary, the pre-K center would be of similar size, but it is a new building. It is, it is not just a rework of the elementary.
Right.
And so we're asking tonight that they, they be awarded the ability to design that, that facility.
And just for perspective, so thirteen pre-K classrooms currently at Reeves, two at Hughes, two at Windsong, one at Rucker. And it is a growing, growing population. The majority of our students that qualify for our pre-K program, it's due to a second language is how they're qualifying for the program. So there's nothing more important than intervening early and making sure our students have what they need. But it is, it's extremely challenging when principals are trying to run a school within a school with early childhood. And you wanna look at what is developmentally appropriate. There's also a lot of benefits with just instructional components because you then have your teachers all together that are teaching the age of a pre-K student. And right now, the constant moving with teachers is extremely disruptive for them. And we've lost teachers over pre-K teacher. Okay, now you're gonna move to another campus. And it's a yearly thing. Cause we have to just kinda ebb and flow with the growth. And so being able to provide a center that's developmentally appropriate for that age of students and then also for the teaching aspect of it, there's a lot of benefits to it.
Only question, and I don't know if this is a question for Dr. Bradley or for Mr. Brown. For the contract that we have in our packet, for the consultants that are listed, are those consultants that have been at the table before or are any of these new to?
Yes, sir. They're, they're consultants that we have used routinely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good question.
I have a question also. What neighboring districts have a pre-K center?
Frisco and Mansville specifically.
McKinney has one. Denton ISD has one. I would say most of the districts larger than us to our south, to our east or, you know, you really, you just get to the point. I think it, in most districts, it comes to when they can occupy a facility on their own is about the time to move. And at the three hundred plus that we're at now, this facility wouldn't be ready at earliest for another eighteen months. I think we're gonna be well over five hundred students and that's, you know, that's a school.
Yeah, they're right.
It is. It is.
And the anticipated design of this facility would be around seven hundred early childhood students, which is a large early childhood center.
Right.
That's what we need.
Some parent training components and things too that'll need to be in this actual facility. Cause that's a big piece of early childhood too, is the parent support.
And the discussion of how these students will be transported, if they're transferred, that's at a later date, correct? All the planning that goes into.
Yes, but we're actually, we needed to discuss that just as we're looking at, okay, what is the footprint of this land look like? And then where is the, you know, how do they get, enter the building and exit the building? And how do the parents drive up or buses drive up? So those are all things that we're working with Mr. Brown and his team, Huckabee.
All right, other questions, comments on that agenda item? Be exciting to see that. All right, well then I will entertain a motion on nine F one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Bill. Second? Thank you, Jana. All in favor? Very good.
Be the cutest building in all of Prosper.
So nice.
Because of the kids.
Yes, yes. I'm sure Josh will do a good job on it to make it cute. All right, number, um, go ahead.
Next up, we have consideration and possible approval of a development agreement with Highland Lakes to pay for Prosper ISD's portion of a new water line and wastewater line that will serve middle school and high school. Just to give you kinda location, this is the Troy Aikman location. Seeing stars is what you probably have heard it referred to as. It's on the east side, actually across Custer. So I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Bradley so I can get this shifted so everyone can see it.
So we're asking tonight, the Highland Lakes development is on go. So in the last three or four weeks, they have turned a massive amount of dirt there in the northeastern part of our district. The developer is, is moving quickly. And it's not often that I come and ask for you to spend seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars so we can save money. But I believe that's, that, that's why we're here tonight. The middle school site and the high school site that we own in this part of the district has been inaccessible to us for quite a while because the infrastructure cost to make it viable was too extreme. We really anticipated it would be seven to eight million dollars to get wastewater, sewer, and roads to this facility. And this agreement would answer two of the three. And the development that this, that this neighborhood will drive will help answer some of the road issues and some of those things. So the question that we were faced with was if we participated with this project, we could build the sewer line and water line to our property edge at today's prices and get better pricing because we're doing it with a larger project, tying onto their project as opposed to them getting what they need and then coming back five or six years later. And then inflation prices and then finish this out. So this would make, it brings those sites into view. Whereas right now, even as we said, it would just be almost impossible for us to justify spending millions of dollars to bring them online. So I feel like this is a, a, a smart and wise investment for the district. We would put this money into escrow for the Highland Lakes development to spend this over the next nine to twelve months. So this project is ready to go. They, they're gonna bring it to their neighborhood and then extend it on for us here. We've been a part of that. Our civil engineer team has been a part of that to ensure that the pricing is correct and that, you know, all the i's are dotted and t's crossed. We've worked through all of that. And then I just, as a note, the developer here, which is backed by Mr. Dale Clark, is a developer we've dealt with in the past. They actually developed Whitley Place, donated the land for Cockrell Elementary. So we do have experience with this developer. They've, they've been helpful in Prosper ISD. And there will also, as a part of this agreement, eventually be an elementary site here as well.
Wonderful.
So it really assists three sites ultimately at a price today that I think is, is more efficient and effective than we would ever see in the years to come.
Yeah, the fact that we can get some cost sharing is a huge win because that's usually not the way that this happens. It's usually on the back of the ISD.
Right.
To handle it and make sure that those wastewater lines are where they need to be so that they're coming to the table saying, hey, we'll, we'll pitch in on this too. It's, it's a good deal for us because this typically does not happen.
Our only risk would be that prices drop dramatically in the future?
Yes, I, I.
Or that we don't ever see development happen up here?
Yes, I think that's.
Neither would seem likely.
I think that's definitely it. And the, the other thing that I, I think is important in this discussion because that certainly is a risk and unlikely one, I think, but it certainly is a risk to be noted. The other thing that's going to happen is this western part of McKinney, we've all kinda been waiting for the first shot to be fired on who is gonna set off the development. And once the infrastructure gets there, we know that everyone begins to chase it very quickly. This is it. So this is not going to be the last development. Now that the wastewater and water lines are coming that direction down Bloomingdale and north, there's just gonna be more because what you're seeing is higher park kind of juts north, but neighborhoods to the east will be able to tie into their wastewater and water lines. So this is going to open the door for a, a piece, piece of land that heretofore has been, you know, just not cost-effective for developers.
Great.
So do we work with the city of McKinney on this project? And city of Salina also, or just?
Well, this is all McKinney. So this is, this is all McKinney. And we have worked, had conversations with the city of McKinney. I think the city of McKinney has, through numerous conversations, it's clear they, this area has not been their focus because they have enough going on in the seventy-five corridor and they were kinda hoping this would stay away. And so we appreciate, due to Mr. Warren's work and just our relationship over the years with this developer came to us and said, this is going to happen. It might be to your, your benefit to participate. And so we did go communicate with the city of McKinney to ensure everything makes sense here.
Other questions for Dr. Bradley on this? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion for item ten on the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Jana. Second?
I'll second.
Dina, all in favor? All right, very good. Okay, now we have our open forum, non-agenda-related items. Appreciate everybody's patience for staying around for, for that. Let me read my stuff.
Mr. Bridges, do you know how many we have signed up for?
What's that?
Do you know how many?
Yeah, we have four signed up. We have four signed up. Okay. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school, district, governance, and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies, FNG, DGBA, or GF Local. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy, BED Local, audience participation in a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter a discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board. I'm gonna skip that. Someone's only have four. As presiding officer of this meeting, I've set the overall time limit for public comment. And based on the number of individuals who signed up for public comment this evening, each individual will be allotted three minutes to speak. Let's see. Please, uh, let's move into that. Finally, I think it's important to address the board's expectations for decorum during this public comment time. While the board certainly encourages members of our community to speak about any school governance or operations topic during public comment, while we know that no one approaches the board unless they care deeply and passionately about the matter they bring before us, we ask that each speaker conduct him or herself in a polite and civil way while addressing the board. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption to our public meeting, I will be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption to our public meeting, I will be forced to remove that person or group from the meeting. Thank you in advance for observing these expectations and the Board of Trustees appreciates very much your active participation in the school district. So our first speaker this evening is Anna Ortega.
Hello, my name is Anna Ortega. I'm a junior at Prosper High School. And I have been going to school here since the third grade. I wanted to start by thanking you guys sitting here and everyone who's speaking today for coming here. And I know that although we may not always agree on everything, we all have a common goal and that is to help the community and help the kids and families of Prosper ISD. And to have the courage and patience to come up here in front of everyone and share your ideas for the overall betterment of the community shows how much we care. And so I'm just gonna get to the point now. I'm here to discuss the treatment of LGBTQI students in this district. This, this issue has always lingered in my mind. However, it recently became much more prevalent to me when I saw that the GSA, Gay Student Alliance, was one of the few to only clubs that were not permitted to participate in the homecoming parade and were not given a valid reason. But why and what makes the GSA offensive? Why is embracing different lifestyles and sexualities offensive to a community that claims to be accepting and diverse? Adding on to that, as a student that has been attending this school here for a fairly long period of time, I've seen an abundance of homophobia, racism, sexism, and more in all forms, both direct and indirect. These instances all have one thing in common and that is that they are based upon the simple miseducation and our opinions formed on the basis of religion to support discrimination. May I remind you that regardless of religion, what religion you practice, discrimination, homophobia, bigotry, and racism are never once supported in any piece of religious. discrimination, homophobia, bigotry, and racism are never once supported in any piece of religious literature. And I'm here to remind you, members of the board, that your duties and responsibilities are to all students. I myself am a strong Catholic, but I'm also a member of the LGBTQI community. And I'm here to remind you that your responsibilities are not to base a school's principles off of yours or anyone's political and religious beliefs. Your duties are to ensure the safety of students mentally, physically, and educationally. Not only is your lack of attention to LGBTQI plus students hurting them, it is also hurting other students by allowing them to stay ignorant and misinformed and you are hindering them from the real world. In top universities such as Columbia, the first thing that they do is introduce themselves by their pronouns. They also have a large and heavily funded GSA. And by not allowing students to experience this at a young age, you are not allowing them to be prepared to interact with people in the real world. We are now asking for you to end the discrimination, not allowing schools in the district to allow the GSA to participate in community events and require that they seriously crack down on the immense amount of hate speech used by students to address members of the community. My peers and I have sent the Board of Directors collective email, emails regarding how to make the school a safer and more inclusive space for the LGBTQI plus students. And I implore you all to take a look at our grievances and use your power for the betterment of the LGBTQI community. A petition has been sent around the district and is currently at over 800 signatures. Please listen to us and take what we have to say seriously. You eight have the abilities to make a great deal of change in this community. Please use it properly and to your advantage. The execution of rules and regulations made by self-appointed watchdogs of public morals is suppression at its finest and we will not stand for it. Listen to us or ignore us, but we will not stop pushing for these protections in the community. Our sexualities are not political statements. Please stop making them ones."
Great. Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Thank you. Thank you for that. Kelsey Reed.
Hello?
Hello.
Is this working? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, please be patient with me. I've never like spoken in public like this before. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the board committee this evening. My name is Kelsey Reed and I'm a junior at Rock Hill High School. Two months ago or so, in this very room, I witnessed bigotry, homophobia, and complete ignorance from my fellow Prosper residents. As a result of this ignorance, the district quietly and subtly enforced the removement of the LGBTQ flag from being displayed in classrooms. However, this did not go by unnoticed. As of last year, 1,053,000 people in Texas identify with being a part of the LGBTQ community according to the Movement Advancement Project's website, which gives a reputable source for LGBTQ-related statistics. This number also includes Texas youth. This is a big enough number to infer that at least one student in our school district identifies with being lesbian, gay, transgender, bisexual, queer, et cetera. I'm sure that our board members agree when I say that every single student at our schools should feel welcomed, represented, and comfortable in the learning environment. However, hearing from a fellow student at my school stating that they were made uncomfortable by the flag and being asked their preferred pronouns was shocking to me. On the contrary, these things make me and other LGBTQ students feel very welcomed and comfortable. You see, these small gestures mean a lot to me and my peers. School is supposed to be a safe space for the district's students and yet I have failed to see this upheld at Rock Hill. I walk, sorry, I walk in the halls during passing period and I hear racist, homophobic, and transphobic slurs carelessly, or should I say casually intertwined into conversations. Even in classrooms, I hear teenage boys calling each other the F slur or gay. I know for a fact that APs and Prosper employees hear this. In the Prosper ISD handbook, it states, "Examples of gender-based harassment directed against a student regardless of the student's or their harasser's actual or perceived sexual orientation or gender identity may include offensive jokes, name-calling, slurs, or rumors, cyber harassment, physical aggression or assault, et cetera." As an example of the leniency towards LGBTQ offenses, last year, an image of two openly gay students walking next to each other in the halls was posted onto someone's Snapchat story making fun of them, which is a clear example of cyber harassment. And to my knowledge, there was no punishment for him either. Even though this was and still is the case, seeing small things like a rainbow flag, a small pen that said "safe space" or being asked my preferred pronoun slash name on the first day made me forget the hate speech, bullying, and microaggression surrounding me for just a moment. Eight hundred-plus people who are former slash present students from Prosper ISD, allies of the community, and just overall decent human beings have signed a petition I created. They agree that we should be able to create a safe space for students in the classroom and school environment.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Reed. Very much appreciate you coming and speak to us tonight. Thank you. I can't tell if this is Shannon Cass, or Carly?
Carly.
Carly.
Hello?
Hello.
I wish we could do this podium. Could I turn it? I'd like to turn it a little bit.
No, why don't you speak to us? That'd be great. Thank you.
Well, I would prefer really to speak to the people, community of Prosper instead of you guys, just you guys, because the reason is you guys serve us. Okay, and I think it would be more appropriate if a podium was showing that you serve us. We will serve you.
Right.
Okay, thank you. So anyways, we have seen many people come here passionately and I know that we are the majority, what I'm going to say right now. And I'm going to repeat it and I'm going to go a little bit further. And the reason why is because it's very important that we understand that we made a very big mistake and we need to learn from it and we need to humble ourselves, okay? Masks are unsafe, unconstitutional, and unscientific. It doesn't protect anyone. It actually sickens people. It's a Petri dish of germs. It's a bacterial pneumonia maker. So I think that we need to be humble and apologize and we need to educate the community to know it's not a good idea and we should not do this ever again. It's also a slippery slope to medical tyranny. And what we parents are very concerned about is forced vaccines for our children. It's very dangerous and this is going on worldwide. And we're talking about a virus that children have a 99.9% natural immunity to. This is basic science and nobody paying any attention to it. And adults have a 99% natural immunity. So there's absolutely nothing sane here that's going on. So we cannot ever do this again. And I just hope that we get people that represent us and understand how important of a dangerous path this was. And we'd also like to find out how you were funded. Were you funded federally? Is this why you were encouraged to do this? Because I know there were some school districts that did not do forced masks, did not close down. There's even one in Texas that did that and they're fine. So, and then my last concern is that this really is dangerous because forced vaccines is Nuremberg-level dangerous. There's no freedom. It's very unsafe. And we just can't, we can't afford to go there anymore. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Carly. Appreciate you speaking to us tonight. James Pope.
Thank you, sir. James Pope, resident here in Prosper, got two kids in the district, both special needs. Thanks for the correspondence that I've had with some of you this week. I really do appreciate it. It's good to get feedback and when questions are asked, you get the answer. So I do appreciate that. One of the things the district let me know about, because there was a lot of confusion out there, was about BrainPop. And it was canceled from what I understand, the end of school year last year. And from what I understand, there was a couple of campuses that were still using it and they were requested not to use anymore. As a former law enforcement officer, there was some stuff in there that really concerned me. I wasn't mad. I was actually hurt because when you go in the search engine and you put police, it's nothing but negative that comes up. It's a shame that in society, we've come to this because there's a lot of good things in BrainPop, but there's some stuff that's not. And I would recommend to some of you to take a look at the YouTube, particularly on BLM. It's completely slanted. So again, thank you for that. And for these people that came out and discussed, I really commend you for coming here. It took a lot of courage, even though I disagree with some of what you have to say does not make you my enemy. So I just want you to know that. And again, one more thing, what a great presentation today on these honors.
Absolutely.
It's a tribute to not just these students, but this district and their family and friends. So thank you for the time again. I do appreciate it and I hope you do take the opportunity to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Appreciate you speaking to us tonight. Okay, that ends our open forum time. We are moving into executive session. Did I get everything right? Did I miss anything? Okay, well then we will take a motion to an executive session. Mr. Beaver, second?
I'll second.
Thank you Drew. All in favor? We will conduct our executive session business and return out here with any decisions that we make. You're welcome to stick around if you'd like. Thank you. Good night. We will conduct our executive session business and return out here with any decisions that we make. You're welcome to stick around if you'd like. Thank you. Good night.
It is 9:33. Call the meeting back to order. We have agenda item number 12A, consideration and possible action on approval of any professional personnel to be employed and status of current professional personnel. We have a list of those people in our board packet. Can I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? Very nice. 12B, consideration and possible action on approval of resignations received. I think we have one of those. Is that right? Just one of those?
I'll make the motion to approve the resignation.
Thank you, Jan. A second?
I'll second.
Second, Deb? All right. All in favor? Beautiful. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Good work, everybody.